It's 8:30. I'd like to thank everybody for coming to the call meeting this morning. The purpose on our agenda is for a resolution regarding the Whitestone Valley construction and demolition landfill. Would like to call the meeting to order at 8:30. Thank you, everybody, again, for being here. It is a little bit different than a typical call meeting. We've been fortunate since we went to two meetings a month. We haven't really had to call very many meetings because we've had time to take care of business every two weeks. This one, there was a little bit of a unique situation in terms of time sensitivity from several different issues. I know as we go through this meeting this morning, that'll make more sense that it really wasn't something we can postpone until January. We had a few different time sensitive issues that made this one unique. So we felt it was important to get the board on board with understanding exactly what was going on. So this morning, instead of just going through and reading a resolution to try to do it, we are going to have a presentation. Bill Wood, our Director of Administration, is actually going to do a presentation on what exactly is going on at the landfill so that we can go from there and then we'll present the resolution there as it goes through. So I'm going to turn the floor over to Mr. Wood and let you take it from here.
Thank you, Chris. So this is the resolution that the Board of Commissioners has in front of it. You can see how thick it is. It's a very involved document. And it is an involved document because the situation is very complex. There are multiple players involved, and the Commissioners wanted to establish as best a record as we could at this level with our limited discovery powers. So as opposed to going through the entire resolution and reading it word for word, the approach we're going to take is to basically parallel the resolution. The resolution, as all resolutions have, it has a title, which is the summary. It has whereas clauses, which establish the facts and circumstances, and it has enacting clauses, which are the directives and requests of the Board. There are four appendices to this resolution. There's an example citizen complaint. There are affidavits from various folks. There are photographs, and there's an E-911 call log. We'll be referencing some of the materials and the appendices in this presentation. What's paralleling the resolution, this is the structure of the presentation, is an introduction, a business overview, and that's a business overview of the business that's involved at the Whitestone Valley landfill. And then there is the last part of the civil charges, the enforcement directives, and the requests that the Board is going to act on here pretty soon. So the introduction. For the introduction, I think the best thing to do first is just to read the title of the resolution, which is what's at the top of all resolutions in caps, and y'all have seen it many times. But this is at a high level, 100,000 feet. This is a pretty good description. "This is a resolution protect and enhance the health and welfare of the residents and other stakeholders of Pickens County, Georgia by directing the staff of the Pickens County Government and the county attorney to take civil enforcement actions against persons with, in quotes, managing, operating, and otherwise associated with the Whitestone Valley, a construction and demolition of landfill for multiple violations of the Code of Ordinances Pickens County, Georgia, and the official code of Georgia annotated." And I just want to stress the very first clause after the title of the resolution, which is a summary of, I think, a good summary of the motivation of why this is being done. "The resolution states in this relevant part that the paramount responsibility of the Pickens Board of Commissioners is to protect and enhance the safety, health, and welfare of Pickens County's residents, visitors, families, businesses, and other organizations." And that's really the statement of the motivation behind all of this. There is a subsequent clause of the resolution that I think is really important as well, and that is, in order to be able to do this, the Board of Commissioners with the staff taking direction from the Board of Commissioners and assisting the Board of Commissioners, basically, we need to do four things. We need to detect applicable violations of the ordinances and other applicable laws. We need to impose corresponding penalties against offending persons. We need to pursue civil remedies against those persons when some circumstances require. And we need to defend against civil actions mounted by offending persons in various courts that, when they seek to avoid penalties and sanctions, and that resolution covers all of that. Foundation for the resolution are, one, representations made on the website of the business. There's one company involved of the five that we know that are up there that basically is the public face of the business, and that company is called Cash Environmental Resources. We'll have a little bit more to say about them, but it's representations on their website that provide us with a lot of background information on this. Statements made by the businesses' employees and representatives. They are very active in interactions with us and literally over the last two weeks for reasons that you'll see a little bit later that have been up here two, three, four times a day looking for various people. Complaints made by citizens, observations made, and photographs taken by county staff, research conducted by county staff, and a stop work order that's been imposed by Fire Marshal Callahan on the facility that is still in effect. The overview of the business. This is something that we don't typically talk about in a setting like this, but given the complexity of the situation and the way that we're approaching it, it's really, really important for us to get a high-level understanding of this and share that with everybody. So the landfill itself is an indispensable part of a multi-state waste management business headquartered in Atlanta that serves markets from East Tennessee to South Central Florida. So it is a, in terms of its geographic footprint, it is not an insignificant business enterprise. How this multi-state waste management business operates, it has four major components. It has ownership, very relevant to the current situation. It has management, very relevant to the current situation. It operates landfills, which is at the center of this situation, and it has waste transfer stations, which are also at the center of this situation. There's a bit of a schematic of the four things. You have the ownership at the top. You have management under the direction of ownership that basically manages the operations of the landfill and various waste transfer stations that basically collect and send waste materials to the landfill. So if we overlay the flow of waste on this, and we overlay the customer and the sources of the waste materials, then it looks like this. You got basically the little bitty squares are customers and sources of the business. They bring waste materials into the waste transfer station. There are three waste transfer stations involved in this situation with Whitestone. All three of those waste transfer stations are located outside of Pickens County. We believe that is by design. There's also, to a lesser extent, in terms of the degree of waste being brought in, waste that's being brought directly to the landfill by customers. That's what those thin arrows are. But this is a very important schematic to keep in mind as we move forward in this. All right. What waste materials do they handle? And this is basically their advertising and promotion from the website. And they're waste materials that cover their geographic footprint. They come from commercial and industrial services that they provide, roll-off containers, dumpsters, CND waste disposal facilities, construction waste hauling and disposal, concrete crushing, and asbestos disposal, residential waste material collection and drop-off. Well, there it is. It's in plain sight. This is taken directly from the website. Basically, representations have been made, but they don't take household waste materials. But as Fire Marshal and Director Elrod will tell you, there's plenty of it up there. There are pictures that'll show that, and the website says they do it. I'm going to back up. This particular business model, Wes Frye isn't here today. He's out ill, but there's an affidavit from Wes in the appendix of the resolution whereby the representatives of the company told Wes that this particular business model that they employ, and I'm using their language, this particular business model was copied after a model in Florida that the owner, or at least the majority owner, had basically built down there. That website, I mean, that Florida business is basically listed on their website in conjunction with what's here in Georgia as the overall business. Now, that just confirms what we already knew because in order for us to get a handle on this, we not only had to look at the business in Pickens County, we had to look at the business across Georgia, but we had to look at the business across the entire face of where they operate in order to understand it. So we'd already figured that out because here, you've got a waste transfer station in Union County. There's a waste transfer station in Cherokee County. There's a waste transfer station in Fannin County, and there's the landfill here in Pickens County. The Florida parallel of that is, there's a landfill in Pasco County. There is a waste transfer station in Nellis County, and there is the overall market that they serve is the greater Tampa area. So it's basically just a parallel, which is what they said to us. Here are the five companies that we know operate up there. There is the front company, Cash Environmental Resources. This is the one that is prominently displayed, has operated the business everywhere in Georgia and Florida. This company is an Atlanta headquartered company. However, the address is in Cobb, even though it's an Atlanta mailing address. That business does not have a business license in Pickens County. It never has. However, anytime we deal with anyone representing any of these companies, it's always a Cash Environmental Resources person, either listed on the website as such, either listed on the business card as such, or listed on other correspondence as such. There's Green Energy Transport, also Atlanta, Cobb. That does currently have a business license here in Pickens. There's K&amp;M Landfill. That one is registered. It has principal office address in Smyrna. It does have a license here. Renewable Energy Holdings, Atlanta. Triple Horseshoe Inc., that's the property owner of record that we discovered in terms of owning the landfill itself. Now, even though there's a couple of different addresses going on here, all five of these are subject to the same common ownership, the same common management, and those addresses, the three Atlanta addresses are all the same, and the two Smyrna addresses are all the same. How are these affiliated? Well, they're owned and hold, or in part, by Mr. Eric Cash, the person who designed the model that we looked at that was, at least before here in Georgia, was deployed in Florida. They are managed through the oversight and involvement of Mr. Cash, Mr. John T. Murphy, Mr. John Bennett, Mr. David Rittenberry, and others. We've had encounters with all these folks, so they are real people to us. They are affiliated through branding and promotion per the business's website, and they're affiliated through really just entwined and intermingled business activities where, you know, they're just up there sort of in a group, just doing everything. The folks, Mr. Eric Cash, the Chief Executive Officer, President of Cash Environmental Resources, that's per his business card. He is owner per the website and per his LinkedIn profile, Mr. John T. Murphy, Chief Operating Officer, per his business card, per email correspondence, and he has signed checks. As such, Mr. John Bennett, Josh Bennett, he is Vice President of Business Operations at Cash, I mean, and he is contact for all the Georgia locations. Basically, we have this information from LinkedIn profile and his website. Mr. David Rittenberry is the site manager. He has provided us the business card. Mr. Leon Watkins has come onto the scene very recently since Fire Marshal Callahan issued the stop work order. We do not have a title and a particular company for him. Okay. Now, we'll meet at it. The civil charges, the enforcement directives, and the requests. The charges against the persons that are managing, operating, and otherwise associated with the business. The unlawful dumping of waste materials in Pickens County which originate from sources outside of the county. Waste materials that originate from sources outside of the county are a pivotal, actually the central, element of their business model. Unlawfully operating in Pickens County without various required permits. This is basically landfill permits that have expired for, there were two of those that have expired, and they're not current. Unlawfully dumping scrap tires as waste materials. We'll see a picture or two about that later. Unlawful creating hazardous conditions in Pickens County. And they owe the Pickens County Government $215,548.11 in tonnage fees, some of which are in arrears since 2020. Talk about this notion of persons, because this is important from a legal standpoint because we are pursuing corporate entities here, at least at this point, is just corporate entities. And the Code of Ordinances of our county basically defines a person, as you can see there in two different instances, as to include corporate entities. So we know that we can psych them, we know we can charge them, we know that we can do what we need to enforce them as corporations. So basically, in the resolution, the Board is directing three things, and we approach these particular violations. There are the ordinance violations, basically stemming from the previous slide that we saw. There are seven violate, we've cited seven violations here in terms of sections that have been violated by them for the things that are listed there. Don't want to go back over those. Because they have violated these particular ordinances, the Code of Ordinances gives the Board of Commissioners the authority to revoke all county-issued permits and licenses, which this resolution does. Because of that revocation, the Code of Ordinances thereby allows the Board to impose an immediate closure order on the landfill, which this resolution does. And then this resolution focuses on the collection of the delinquent tonnage fees that are out there in excess of $215,000. So specifically with regard to the directives. The resolution, the Board, through the resolution, has directed the staff to impose applicable civil penalties on all responsible persons, which we've basically gone through, and then to make necessary preparations to prosecute the ordinances in magistrate's court. So those ordinance violations, that is within the purview and jurisdiction of the magistrate's court. Then regarding the additional civil remedies due to the ordinance violations, the resolution has directed the staff to revoke all of those licenses and permits, impose an administrative closure on the order on the landfill, and directs Mr. Landham to make necessary preparations to defend the administrative closure order in Superior Court. Then regarding the delinquent tonnage fees, it directs Mr. Landham to make necessary preparations to compel payment in Superior Court of those fees that are owed to us. Now, let's take just a quick look at two things because a lot of this is theoretical until really we look at a couple of facts and how they look. The two things we want to look at are the waste originating outside of Pickens and the hazardous conditions. So the Cash Environmental Resources, the relevant part says about the landfill. It says, quote, "The," and I'll just start at landfill, "provides local landfill disposal services to North Georgia and the metro Atlanta areas. This facility has capacity to take all demolition, construction, debris, asbestos, and certain industrial waste subject to approval. It's the premier recycling facility within the metro Atlanta and North Georgia areas." That's admission on its face, public admission on its face for promotional purposes, that there are materials coming into Pickens from outside of the county. Per the representatives to Pickens County personnel, this representation was made to Fire Marshal Callahan and Director Elrod. This is in their affidavit in the appendix of the exhibit of the resolution. Ninety-five percent of the waste materials dumped at the valley originate from sources outside of Pickens and received insignificant part from the free transfer stations. They say a picture's worth a thousand words, but this is a picture of a map. So what we can see here is basically transfer station in Fannin, transfer station in Union, the landfill, which is a little oval part, and the Cherokee transfer station there at the bottom. The solid arrows are the flow of waste from various customers to the landfill. The dotted arrows are the transfer of the materials from the landfill to the facility here. This notion about servicing East Tennessee, you can see Tennessee on the top of the map there. This is where it's coming from, is basically Tennessee waste coming in to those transfer stations up north of us and then making, they're ultimately making their way down here. The website doesn't say anything about North Carolina, but given the geographic nature of Union, I'd be surprised if there weren't coming from there. But we have not established that, and it's really not relevant considering everything else we know. So take another look at that. Okay, so this, you'll see there on the left of the box, the kind of materials that are coming into here from a previous slide. On the left, you'll see, on the far right, you'll see a solid oval that says the potential source of area dumped from waste materials, and you'll see that the Pickens County landfill is covering that basically area that's transparent there. And you can see the three red rectangles, which is the transfer stations. And you can see the black oval, which is the landfill. And that's a very general snapshot, but generically speaking, we think it's pretty accurate what's going on. And what's interesting about this is, forget Tennessee. When you look at this area and the counties and cities that are in it, the state of Georgia has, based on 21 projections of the source we use for this year, 10,800,000 folks. Within this area, there are 5,300,000 folks. Pickens County has 34,000 folks. So at least as it regards to their penetration of this particular area, you've got a county with 34,000 folks that's really accommodating over 5 million folks in terms of the flow of waste. All right. I'll just set this up. I'll ask Director Elrod to comment on this. This reflects a information from one of the exhibits, which is an entire E-911 call log from, only from 2021. Slone?
Yeah, basically, you can see we've ran a total of seven so far of fires that are Basically, the only way you're going to put out a fire in a landfill is to cover it up, and that's basically what they've done. When this originated, we have mattresses on fire that we saw. We had tires on fire. There's just various things that are not even supposed to be in this landfill that were on fire, which in turn, on a health issue for Pickens County, we're concerned about citizens driving through or by that area is why we basically shut it down because they could not get the fire into control. As you can see, we've run it seven times. We had another big fire in 2020. There's been actually numerous fires. I believe we've had three over the last several years that have been different. Most of these calls here were in the same general, you know, timeline for the most part, but you just can't put them out, and for health reasons is why the Fire Marshal and myself got involved. People don't need to be breathing this stuff that they're basically dumping that they're not supposed to be, and it's coming from areas that it's not supposed to be, that it's supposed to be for Pickens County residents. So that was our concern. That is why we put the stop work order in place. It is still smoking. When you go out there, it's still smoking. It is giving a foul odor. It smells like rotten eggs, basically, which is usually indicative of some methane gas coming out of there. So we have not put a gas meter on it. Basically, we got out of there pretty much as quick as we could, but you can smell it. You can actually smell it from the 515 area if you're passing by, if the wind direction is correct. So that's basically it. Unless, if anyone has any questions.
Yeah, there's two things on that. One, Chief Paul was on surveillance out there. Chief, when was the date of that? Do you remember?
I'll have to look that up.
All right. Well, it's in the affidavit, but the chief was out on surveillance after Fire Marshal Callahan issued the stop work order, basically to make sure that there was compliance. And the odor was to such an extent that the chief had to redeploy his location, surveillance location. So, I mean, that, again, is anecdotal, but it's, you know, it's pretty, I think it's pretty instructive from that standpoint, which brings us, and Slone, I'll go back to you on this, which brings us to our closing things, which are a few pictures that are taken from the appendix, and these are compliments of Slone and Shane.
That was the first night we got a call on fire. As you can tell, that's quite a bit of area that is on fire. They're intent of trying to cover it up at this point with dirt. That's, like I say, that's basically the only way you can totally get out. You could dump water on it all day long, but it's not going to put this fire out when it comes to that.
Go to the next one.
Yeah. As you can see, here's a mattress. That one is very clear that that is a mattress that is on fire. Mattresses are not supposed to be in there at all, so. This is basically the wall of debris that is supposedly their CND, which is anything from a construction site. As you can see, that is trash. I don't know how else to say it. It's not a whole lot of building materials in that. Here's where they were trying to cover it up after we had told them that you need to get your mattresses out, you need to get your tires out, your plastics, you know, basically out of there, because that is a health hazard. As you can see, the mattresses are circled, the little black speck to the left of the big mattress there is a tire that is still in there that they're trying to cover up after we had told them during the stop work order what they had to actually get pulled out of there, where the tires, mattresses. And as you can see, they were attempting to try to keep covering it up instead of pulling it out. This is actual smoke still coming out from where, underneath the ground, basically. So it is still burning. You can see a tire in this picture here. And like I say, basically, it is still burning underneath that.
That's it. I mean, the last thing that I want to say is I just want to just say very deep expression of gratitude and thanks to all the staff that worked on this. A lot of people had a hand in doing this analysis, doing this review, gathering this material, putting everything together. As the chairman said, it's a very unusual situation for us up here in terms of the kind of things we normally encounter, and so none of this would have been enabled without a lot of hard work and a whole lot of people, some of whom are in here. So of all the thanks for that.
Thank you, Ben. I appreciate it. Before we kind of go into the resolution portion, I want to open it up if you have any questions for any of the staff that was involved, I don't know if you, after seeing and hearing everything that was presented. I know that where it was referenced, the ordinance violation as far as the origination of the trash, our ordinance is very clear and specific that a landfill is for the citizens of Pickens County unless prior authorization was granted from. And at the time the ordinance was written, it was the sole commissioner, so the language does say sole commissioner, but it is very specific that it is designed for Pickens County residents unless something had been previously agreed. That has not came before us to have any kind of an agreement for bringing that in. Essentially, what we're attempting through this resolution, and I'll go to the final sections where it's got to let it be resolved at the end, and I'll just go through those portions, and that's basically the request of what we're trying to make for staff and for the county attorney. I know Director Wood kind of went into that section, but I want to just get that particular portion of the language of a resolution before we try to put this up for a vote for a resolution to be signed. Essentially- Essentially, it's now therefore be resolved that the staff of Pickens County Government hereby directed to impose all applicable civil penalties on all responsible persons, which was as defined, could include corporations, and seek all possible civil remedies from said responsible persons regarding the aforementioned violations, which are associated with management of the Whitestone Valley landfill. Also, due to the aforementioned violations of Section 58, and it lists all the different code sections that were referenced in the presentation, that Pickens County's government is directed pursuant to immediately revoke any and all business, building, and development, and any other county-issued permits or licenses related to the Whitestone Valley landfill and related to any persons associated with management or operation of the Whitestone Valley, until such time as compliance is met, that due to said revocation or suspension of all applicable license and fees, Pickens County Government is hereby directed pursuant to Section 58 109 of the ordinance to immediately impose an administrative closure order on the Whitestone Valley landfill until such time as compliance is met or until the ruling of a court of competent jurisdiction is obtained, that said administrative closure orders shall prohibit the receipt and dumping of any waste materials at the Whitestone Valley landfill and shall prohibit the entry of any parties other than government officials except for employees and independent contractors whose presence are necessary to suppress fires, to mitigate health and fire hazards, and/or to monitor hazardous conditions present on the premise, premise and who is specifically approved in advance and in writing by the Chairman and Board of Commissioners. Due to the aforementioned violations of the Pickens County ordinances and official code of Georgia annotated, the county attorney is directed to immediately make necessary preparations to defend administrative closure in Superior Court and to compel the payment of delinquent fees due to Pickens County. That regarding the aforementioned directed actions related to the aforementioned violations of the Pickens County ordinances and OCGA, the staff of the Pickens County Government is hereby directed to notice, cite, and serve the following persons by providing citations, orders, and services personally to, and it lists the same individuals as owners and corporations that were there before. The Pickens County Government is hereby directed to provide copies of all citations, orders, and services to Mr. Murphy and Mr. Eric Cash by service hand delivery as the principal operators of the corporation. The Board of Commissioners hereby directs the staff of the Pickens County Government to immediately inform, inform that further actions become necessary to protect the health and welfare of the residents and stakeholders of Pickens County from the actions of persons managing, operating, and/or otherwise associated with the Whitestone Valley landfill. And the Board of Commissioners hereby respectfully requests that the Pickens County Sheriff's Office assist the Pickens County Government and staff regarding all citations, orders, and services directed here, and that also includes monitoring the location to ensure that the closure is, is intact. Those are the, the action steps that this resolution leads to. I know there's a lot of information. I know that hopefully that, that makes sense. I think Director Wood did an incredible job with trying to take and break this down to show the complexity and to show the scope of what's going on. So I want to thank you for, for putting that presentation together, not just for the board, but also for the public and for the media to be able to, to understand that this is not something that was just a whim or a decision that was made based off of one report, but a significant amount of investigation gone into it. With that said, unless there's further, with that said, I would like to make a motion that we sign the above-mentioned resolution and request our staff to act accordingly. Out of the second?
Sure.
Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
All right.
All right, motion carries. So we do have a portion for any general comments. I know that we have media and some staff that are here. Are there any general comments? I know as far as questions specific to, do we get, we do have a packet for, for each of the medias, and you guys will have everything that was in the presentation along with the pictures that we used for the illustrations. But do I have any other comments that anyone would like to make?
Gosh, the question.
You can.
How long has it been going on?
Since they, I mean, I assume they started with settlement.
The current ownership purchased the company back in 2018.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, the.
So two years is what?
The Triple Horseshoe owner, I think the deep work into them, the most recent was 2002.
2002 was the first time they did it.
There've been, there've been a sequence of transactions and mergers that basically have combined. I think it was nine parcels ultimately into this, but, but, I mean, our, at this point in the way that we had to approach this, our discovery powers are very limited. So we had basically had to provide, I mean, to, to put this together based on public sources and our interactions. But from the best we can tell, the landfill there in some form or fashion has been in existence for quite a while, but that with the change in ownership and management and with the combining of the landfill with the transfer stations, that the nature of the landfill, and I'll just leave it at that, the nature of the landfill changed.
And our discovery really started at the time of the fire calls, when they immediately started noticing, and we started receiving complaints in this, in the packet as well from the complaints of the type of odor of the things that were burning that were there. And then the Fire Marshal and Fire Department started to capture the images to show, yes, those things that people were smelling are actually burning. And so we then started to dig deeper to try to figure out why those, why those were there, and that's what kind of led to a larger, a larger deep dive and look into what was going on. So in November, when the fires started around Thanksgiving weekend is when, when this process really kind of amped up to investigate what was going on. You ready?
Is there, at this point, I mean, are you literally going to make them dig it up, get mattresses and tires out, or is that even possible?
At this point, we're going to enact the closure, and then as we kind of move forward, try to look and see what further remedies we can require, or if the state who monitors, because EPD does have a large scope of responsibility within, within a landfill and any permits issued by the state. So we're going to kind of start working collectively with, but what we're acting on right now is our local ordinance only for the closure. Anything beyond that, we'll, we'll have to pair up with the state to see what the next steps will be to get it to a place where it could operate successfully. I do, I do believe a lot of local citizens use the facility. We're not, we're not denying, I know if you looked at that image, they, they do receive from, from local as well, but that's a small picture in the scope of what's actually coming in, so we'll have to, to review that as we get. All right, well, I want to thank everybody for coming. Thank you again, Bill, for the presentation, and Sloan, Cole, Shane. I know Wes, who's, who's not here today, has been significantly involved in the coal and plant development, has been very active with this as well. There's a lot of people that have been in the middle of this for quite some time, so I want to say thank you to everyone for being so diligent.
I'd like to mention Kenny too, who's also advised us technically on this, so.
So thank you. Thank you to everyone. It is now 9:08. Can we adjourn? Thank you.